It's seven o'clock, so I'm gonna open the monthly meeting of board trustees and we'll start with Clay. And please call the roll.
Here.
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 Here. And before we get to privilege of the floor, I'm assuming you guys are from participation in government?
Yes.
Anybody else here from big? So, welcome tonight, I'm Chris Gadsbrun there. This is the board trustee.
He's always not dressed like it.
So, generally, we go to summer guard, which is what I'm wearing. And then, when the weather cooled, we'd go back to our formal wear, but it was so nice today that I just put on what I was gonna wear, so. So, what I'll do for you guys is I'll kind of explain what we're doing as we go along. Generally, our meetings click a lot a little bit faster than what I'll do tonight. Because I know you're here for a class, I'll kind of explain what we do as we do it. And I know you're supposed to be here for an hour, but we generally don't last an hour, so you get out on a good one for me, so. So, welcome, welcome tonight anyway. So, at this point, I'm gonna open privilege of the floor. For your visitors, privilege of the floor is the opportunity for anybody from the community to address the board. So, they'll sign up when they come in, or if they haven't signed up and they realize that they should have, we'll let them speak too. We also have a public hearing tonight, a special use permit, so there's an opportunity to speak for that too. So, this privilege of the floor that we're gonna have first is for people that wanna speak on anything except for the special use permits. So, the clerk right now is getting the list of people that wanna speak. Just think we have somebody that did sign up and wanted to, so we'll just wait until they come up here. Just for entertainment purposes, I'll tell you guys I taught in high school for thirty-some odd years, I retired five years ago, so it's nice to see some teenager back here. Okay, and now at this point, I'm gonna open privilege of the floor. We have one person signed up to speak, and that's Rebecca Thornton of 135 Riverside. And Rebecca, if you wouldn't mind speaking into the microphone, and that way it'll go on the recording that we do, so.
Good evening, thank you for listening to me tonight. I'm not sure if this is the correct venue or not, but as you know, I live at 135 Riverside. And the traffic is my concern. The traffic over the last six months has exploded. And the speed limits that these cars are driving is totally unacceptable. I, you know, the speed limit in the village is thirty, these guys are going forty, if not even more. And I live on, it's kind of on the corner of South Tenbrook and Riverside, and there's a stop sign there, which is great. But, they continue to blow right through it, they don't even do the typical rolling stop. They literally blow through it. I have two kids, my daughter rides her bike all over the village, and my son, he rides a bike everywhere. You know, and I'm really concerned that the kids on Riverside are really in danger with these cars that are just blatantly driving fast and blowing through the stop sign. I spoke to Scotia PD quite a bit, they've done a really good job stepping up and kind of patrolling, you know, Riverside a little bit better. But there's only two of them, so it's hard to keep track of, you know, it's happening early morning, and then it usually picks up around four. And then, as soon as dust hits, it's just full-out craziness. So, I just wanna bring it to the attention of the board, because it's really a concern of mine, excuse me, and along with all my neighbors, so, you know.
All right, there may be some other things that the police can do, we've got the speed trail that helps people realize how fast you're going and that sort of thing, so.
That's what I was saying.
And our chief is here tonight, so he's heard what you had to say, so. I'll tell them about it tomorrow, yeah, this was the proper place to bring that, so.
All right, I wasn't sure, so thank you for giving me your time, I appreciate it, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard at privilege of the floor that didn't sign up tonight?
Maybe we signed the wrong list?
So, there's one for the special. There's one privilege of the floor for the special use permit for Dunkin' Donuts?
No, CBS.
So, then that would be this regular, so you can.
It's all right, I just, uh, just.
I'm Christine Mazzio, I live at 222 Glen Avenue, directly behind the new CBS building that's being put up.
And my name is Sharon Trumford, 218 Glen Avenue, also behind the new CBS. I'm sure you've seen me try to put a little humor attached to the building?
Yep, yep.
So, at this point, something has come to our attention. Now Sharon and I have been trying to keep up on the building and the plans, and it came to our attention that there's been a change in the type of fencing that's going to be put around for privacy. So, what I'd like to do is I'd like to approach Chris and show you these pictures, you know. The pictures I just gave Mr. Casper are of my backyard. Initially, I had a solid tree border, where I did not even see the three buildings that were on Mohawk Avenue. Now those are all down, and so there is no privacy whatsoever, and I view the big yellow building. And it is the, it is going to be done nicely eventually. And when I say that I am close to the construction, there's a picture there, the construction about three feet from my bedroom window. There's another one of my kitchen window, I'm standing at my kitchen window, and there is a backhoe or a front loader. And this is what I've had to deal with all summer, so I'm whining a little bit, because the beep, 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 beep all day long, and vibrations through my house. And all this time now, I figure, well, I'm gonna be a trooper, because in the end CBS is gonna supply me with a privacy wall, so I could get some of the privacy back. Now, we've just been informed as of yesterday that above the retaining wall, there's going to be a see-through fence, like a wrought iron fence, similar to the one that is by the bank parking lot. We were always under the impression it was gonna be a solid privacy fence.
Who told you that?
Zachary from the, yeah, Zach told us, the man in charge of the construction.
Zach told her it would be a see-through fence. I was under the impression it would be a privacy solid fence, because I was here for almost all of the planning board meetings. And it even says on the early site plan that I have.
Okay, let me just check with Tom, because he's already assured her that there was gonna be a goodly fence there.
Well, yeah, a goodly fence, but the description on the site plan is decorative screening fence. So, I took that to mean between this and the tall slender gentleman that was pretty much representing CBS, that it would be a solid fence. Because I told them, when we bought our house in 1978, there were seven buildings, seven homes, between us and South Tenbrook Street, and slowly, they've all been torn down. And when the last house was torn down between us and First National Bank. The bank at least was an extremely good neighbor, they graded everything, I didn't have to worry about water runoff. They put up a very nice solid vinyl fence, even let us choose the color. So, Mr. W O J T I L A asked me if I was happy with that fence, and I said yes. So, I took that to mean he understood solid fence. And now we're being told it's not going to be a solid fence. So, not only do we have the lack of trees that used to give us privacy, we're also gonna be subjected to a ground level higher than what it's been for the last thirty-some years. When people drive through the pharmacy drive-through, they're probably gonna have a bird's eye view of our backyards, and the fumes from the cars. And then the diesel vehicles, privately owned diesel vehicles, not to mention the delivery trucks.
We've had a couple of little hiccups like this that we've been able to resolve, so I'll check with Lewis tomorrow.
Okay.
Who wants to phone a call back?
I'll take it back.
What's your number?
Six oh three, five eight five nine. You better give Sharon a suitcase, I'm not home.
Well, my home number is three seven seven, three one six three.
And again, our concern is that, is the fence, again, I was just told it was going to be like a wrought iron see-through fence.
All right, so we just want some privacy, so help with the privacy.
I'll check with Lewis and let you know what I don't want.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else here to be heard at privilege of the floor? I think saying I wanna close that, and item number four, which is our special use permit for Dunkin' Donuts. So, for my students, Dunkin' Donuts was approved a little over a year ago to put in a drive-through. So, you could come off Glen Avenue, go through a drive-through, and drive to pick up your Dunkin' Donuts. Those expire after a year, and if you haven't done any work on the project within a year of your approval, then you have to come back for the approval again. So, that's why they're here tonight to get re-approved for the drive-through. So, we've got one trustee who hasn't heard this before, so before I open up the public hearing, if you guys would mind just briefly explaining what the drive-through plan is.
Good evening, we're meeting with ABD Engineers. Project loan at Seventeen Mohawk Avenue, it's an existing Dunkin' Donuts that's there now. It's got an existing curb cut right in, right out, off of Route Five, Mohawk Avenue. This property along Glen Avenue is known as Ten Glen Avenue. It currently has a green apartment building on there now, which will be removed to make way for an extension of the parking lot and the drive-through access. A little addition, about one hundred and fifty square feet will be added on to the back of the existing Dunkin' Donuts for the drive-up window. And we have double, two-way access out onto Glen Avenue, because we are only restricted right in, right out on Mohawk Avenue. But then we also have a one-way drive-through to enter the drive-up window. And then Seventeen Mohawk Avenue has a strip and alleyway that they own to Glen Avenue. So, the way we have this configured is the driveway would come through to the drive-up window, and it would exit out that fifteen-foot wide strip of land out to Glen Avenue. As Mayor mentioned, we got this approved a year ago, both site plan and this board for the special use permit. And the real time, timing of why we're here today is because, you know, the land, it gets a little complicated. The land is owned by Jeff Christiana, who has a lease with Dunkin' Corporate. And then you have Kevin Garcia, who's here tonight, that owns the franchise. So, he doesn't own the land, he doesn't own the lease, Dunkin' Corporate has the lease. And just December of 2016, that lease was finally signed by Dunkin' Corporate. Anytime you have to work with corporations, it's very difficult and timing-consuming to get your lease agreement, and that's why we're, you know, we're here again tonight. As I explained last week, we worked before the planning board, which they granted us re-approvals. We're not changing anything from what we got approved a year ago. So, everything is exactly the same, and, you know, we're here tonight so that we can make this project come to fruition, so. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer. I don't know if Mr. Trainer is the attorney on the project tonight, I don't know if he has anything to say right now.
I just wanted to update the board. Last time around, there were some legal arguments made to the board against the approval. The board wisely approved the special use permit as proposed. Nothing has changed, I don't think, from an engineering standpoint, nor from a legal standpoint. Mr. Beckering, neighbor on the corner, made the same legal arguments to the State Supreme Court, and Judge Barry Kramer agreed with the board that having the one way was the right way to go, and that Mr. Beckering has no rights in that alleyway. And in fact, has, you know, no basis, no legal basis to what occurs or doesn't occur in that alleyway. And I just wanted to hand up and make part of the record Judge Kramer's decision, because it addresses all the legal issues that were put into the record last time. And they've been resolved favorably to Mr. Garcia.
So, just one more explanation for you guys. So, I think now a project of this magnitude wants to be done, the building goes to our planning board for a site plan review. And whoever wants to do the project shows our planning board, it's a group of volunteers, what wants to be done. They make sure that the project complies with our design guidelines and some other aspects of the project. The only reason it comes to the village board trustees is because our law requires that drive-throughs get a special use permit, and that's why it comes to us. So, we take what the planning board has done, we take their recommendation, and then we make a decision on the, on the drive-through. So, with that, I'm gonna open the public hearing for the special use permit. Is there anyone who cares to be heard at the public hearing? Okay, so we've got Tom Neely.
Signed the wrong list, thought I was signing in.
I didn't even decide in to come here. And Mike Coran, six seventy, five eight five.
I'm, as you probably know, the attorney for Don Beckering and.
If you wouldn't mind speaking into the mic, sure, we have a few questions.
I'm Mike Coran, I'm an attorney for Don Beckering and for Mr. Zhang, who owns Ming's Flavor Restaurant. And as the board knows, a year ago, when the site plan was presented, we had some objections. But I wanna say that generally, we're in favor of local business people improving their property. We don't have a problem with the plan that's presented to the extent that there's landscaping changes and upgrades in the building. And we don't have a problem or objection to the drive-through. Our objection is that the alleyway that's seen there is intended to be, by the proponents of the plan, made one-way, exit-only. And although the board, the planning board approved the plan as presented, it's our position that whether or not the village of Scotia or the owner of the property can limit the access, ingress, and egress to that property is a legal question. And the board may approve the plan, but I think it is up to Supreme Court to determine whether or not my client's rights in easement can be terminated or curtailed in any way. Now, Mr. Trainer mentioned that it was before Judge Kramer, and it's true, and it's still before Judge Kramer. What Mr. Trainer was speaking to, and I wanna make sure the board understands this. Judge Kramer has not made a decision on the merits of our action. We have a lawsuit pending to enjoin Garcia management from attempting to make the alleyway one-way, exit-only. What Mr. Trainer talked about in the decision you have is Judge Kramer's decision on an application for an initial temporary restraining order. And for technical reasons, he said he wasn't going to make an order restraining them at this time, and he was gonna await the final disposition of the case. So, the case is still pending, and it will be determined by Judge Kramer. Whether or not Judge Kramer determines it to be within the province of Mr. Garcia or Jeff Christiana to make that one-way, or whether he sides with Mr. Beckering and says it's an easement by prescription, and it's existed for a hundred years. And when the, when the village sold the property to Charlie Mitchell, the records of the town, or excuse me, of the village trustees indicate that there was discussion indicating that it would remain an easement. So, my, my point here tonight is that we have no objection to the improvement of the Dunkin' Donuts property. But it's our position that the Supreme Court has not yet decided this, and will decide it, and they are the ones who will ultimately decide whether it can be made one-way or remain two-way. And we continue to try to work, Mr. Trainer and I have had discussions to see if there's some middle ground. We haven't found that yet, but our purpose tonight is merely to reiterate to the board our objection about the intent to make that alleyway one-way. So, thank you for your time.
Mike? So, basically, from our point of view, I mean, we're not approving the one-way anyway, and you're not objecting to the drive-through. I don't think, I mean, we have to wait for the Supreme Court in any event, so, and they could trump whatever we say, so.
I agree with all of that, and he's, you know, whether.
And we're not gonna say that anyway, so it's fine.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was a point I was gonna make, is, you know, the issue of the one-way on the alley is private property, it's a civil issue between two property owners. You know, what's before us is just that, the plan for the drive-through and the Dunkin' Donuts. So, whether or not that alley, as a piece of private property, becomes one-way, really, is not the concern of the village, and it doesn't have anything to do with the approval of the plan, so.
Anybody else here care to be heard at the public hearing? I'm gonna close that, and I'm gonna entertain a motion for a negative deferment for secret determination.
Sharon?
Any discussion on that? If you'd say aye, 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 and it goes. And then I entertain a motion to approve discussion use permit for the drive-through for the Dunkin' Donuts project.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that one? I think we should call the roll on this one, because it's a special use permit.
Trustee Denver.
Yeah.
Trustee Denver.
Yes.
Trustee Rosen.
Yes.
Mayor Cassper.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you guys very much. We'll take the forty-five second recess, and let you, Jer, unless you wanna stay for the meeting here, what would you say?
Thank you.
Okay, so we're reconvening and we do want item number five, which is to authorize a superintendent for parts to issue requests and proposals for the telemetry system. This is the radio system that goes from our well pumping station up to the reservoir to tell us the water level of the reservoir. For you guys, we pump water out around for the village of Scotia. We pump it all the way up the hill on Spring Road to the underground reservoir we have up there. And then, since it's so high up in the air, gravity is what gives us the water pressure for our system. That reservoir was made in the nineteen forties, and it uses an electric wire system and a float to tell us how full the reservoir is. And that's getting old and obsolete, and there's no parts to replace it, so what we're going to do is we're gonna buy what you would call a Bluetooth system that wiredlessly reports how much water is in our reservoir. So, anybody care to authorize, either to go out for the RFQ for that? I'll make a motion, I'll second. Any discussion on that? If you'd say aye, 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 any opposed? Item number six is to authorize a superintendent to issue an energy performance contract request for qualifications for the LED streetlight program. So, what we're doing is we are looking at converting all of our streetlights to LED. It's much more energy efficient. It's a large project, so to do that, what we're proposing is to hire a company to manage the project for us. And then, they would take the project over, we would buy all the lights, and then we would replace them with LED lights. It would cut our energy costs significantly, and the way the project works is our costs at first would not be less, because we have to pay the cost of buying these new fixtures. But in about ten years' time, we'd see dramatic decrease in our energy use. So, would anybody care to authorize, either to go out for the RFQ?
Wait, I just have a pipe. Can we talk about this for a second?
Uh, we should, we have a motion and a second, and then a discussion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
That's it.
Okay, now, good.
Okay. I don't know if we can make sure we include National Grid on your replacement cost of keeping them as the, as the landlord of the lights, basically. They're just doing some digging this week after we were, after our meeting, like they actually will do the replacement program too. Through that, I just wanna make sure we get that directly.
When the RFQ goes out, it's for anybody that wants to manage that program.
I think you can just call National Grid, and they'll give you like a price for it. So, I don't know if they'll respond to an RFQ.
Did you do that anymore?
Well, the National Grid program, which Greg discussed that when we had our meeting last week. The major issue with that program is you have to buy that, that program, the, the, I forgot what it was called. Uh, residual, the residual value, you pay that amount upfront.
Okay.
And it, it could be in the tens to hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Okay.
And so, that, that's a major stumbling block. The National Grid system program works well for municipalities that maybe own some of their lights already.
Okay.
So, I, you know, I looked into that, Maria and I attended a class, a Nikon class, and I think that's, that's a major issue for the village, because we would need cash upfront to, to do the project.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there's a lot of risk in owning streetlights attached to someone else's poles.
Understood.
As opposed to just keep going, we're doing it.
We could easily get the price for that one.
Yeah.
Whatever it was, but that would, you know, that would be something we would have to bond to that one, if we, if we like that term, but. We could get the price for it, right, you just call them.
I don't, I'm not sure I'd say easily, but yeah, we can, I think.
Well, they wanna keep us as a, you know, I'm sure they're gonna make, I'm sure it's beneficial for them to keep us, and they own it, and pay them.
Yeah, I, I'll talk to you some more about that, but, yeah.
I just wanted, before we eliminate it as a option.
Yeah, I don't think doing the RFQ would eliminate that option.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Right, let's call a roll?
Trustee Denver.
Yes.
Trustee Kayden.
Yes.
Trustee Rosen.
Yes.
Mayor Casper.
Yes. Okay, item number seven is the public announcement of the date of time for Halloween. So, Halloween, believe it or not, is gonna be on October thirty-first, which is a Tuesday. The official time for trick-or-treating is from four to eight. And we'll have on our website the schedule for the cider and donuts wagon, and if you give it to me, I'll send it out in mass email as well.
We'll get those tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good. Item number eight are my comments to the board. Scratch out "mean" off there, because I realized it's gonna be on that. I just wanna let all board members know that October thirteenth is the flu shot day for any village employees, and you guys are included. So, if you'd like to get a free flu shot on October thirteenth, you can do that, if you do intend to get one. If you wouldn't mind calling and letting Nui know, it's better if you have an appointment. I also wanna tell you that November second marks the sixtieth anniversary of Vern's Barbershop being in business in the village of Scotia. So, at our monthly meeting in November, we'll do a recognition for him, but if you happen to be in or see Vern, congratulate him on sixty years in the village. I think we all know that, it was in the paper, that we've received a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from the state for, the paper called it a freshwater improvements or infrastructure improvements, but it's really, what's that? How much is that? I got my numbers here, it's a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And what that money will be used for is improvements to our, the pumping station that pumps our sewage or to. And what that money will be used for is improvements to our, the pumping stations that pumps our sewage over to Skid Equity and the demolition of the old sewage treatment plant. So to segue with this, that I just got some information from C D T C on a new round of linkage grants. And they'd like to have the initiatives work together. You know, we've been trying to talk about paving our bike trail, which is right at the site where all this work is going to be done. So those linkage grants require twenty-five percent cost share from the village. So I called them and I said, geez, we're doing this big project. Could our cost share be what we're doing and then get the bike path paved as well? They said, yes, that sounds like a great project. So I called the town. I'm waiting for a call back from their grant person there. So maybe we can roll the whole thing into one. We'll see if it comes to fruition. But at the very least, we're going to get the pumps rebuilt and the sewage pump station, the demolition of the, the old sewage treatment plant, some new fencing. It'll be a nice spot because we've got our, our top of the boat lunch right there, as well as the beginning of the bike trail. So we'll see if we can make it a bigger project than it already is.
Is that the Mohawk River canal?
Yeah.
The name of that newspaper?
Yep. Just want to let you know that the docks are coming out still on Monday.
Yes.
So the canal's closed, the docks are coming out on Monday. And then I just wanted to point out the fine artwork that's being displayed from all the different schools in Scotia, Dunville School District. We get these a couple of times a year. It's always nice to see them decorating our village home. And those are my comments. Item number nine, correspondence liaison and special committee reports. Trustee Denver.
We have a planning board meeting. I think these were the Dunkin' Donuts and the CBS proposal. CBS proposal was not, nothing, I'm sorry, not CBS, Cumberland Farms. Cumberland Farms was basically a plan, but it wasn't, there was nothing to vote on yet. So we have a lot of, it posed more questions than it answered. Anyway, the Dunkin' Donuts, was there, there was one that was there? Anyway.
Signed for, signed for SICO?
Anyway, and we had a fire department meeting that was relatively out of it.
Now, trustee Tangerio.
We had a bid meeting yesterday morning. Not too much stuff went around. They had a bid mixer last month. And the village and the bids split a booth at the Oktoberfest. And it was pretty good. We had almost every trustee, the mayor was there. We had a wheel of chance and we were giving away gifts, tripots and water bottles and T-shirts. And we got a lot of people over there. We haven't had a zoning board meeting, but we do have one later this month.
Great, trustee Rizzo.
Just got a report on the Hollow Annie Avenue. We were meeting and putting together, after we changed the date back to Sunday. We're putting together parade and the other activities that we're having, so we move along on that. Thanks for that through the board.
Item number ten, departmental reports. Any questions or comments on departmental reports? Any motion to accept them?
Make motion.
I'll second motion. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So for you guys, the departmental reports, each department, police, fire, public works, and parks supplies the trustees with a, for a report of what happened in the past month just to kind of keep them up to date on what's going on. So they get to review them and this is the opportunity they can ask each of the department heads if they have any question about what happened over the last month.
I did have one, Pete, in your report that less than one hundred class that they went to, we could just have made it a zero.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
All right, audit of claims. I'm going to appoint myself to the finance committee tonight and trustee Matthew Zapsins. And I'll move that we check, accept the audit of claims. I'll second that. Any discussion on that? Please call a roll.
Trustee Denver.
Yes.
Trustee Tangerio.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so the audit of claims is the list of bills that we need to pay every month. It can be anywhere from nuts and bolts that we bought at DPW to paying the power bill or any bills that we pay. So two trustees on the board go through and they look at every single bill to make sure that there's a set of eyes from the elected officials so that we know what bills are paid for the ones that owe that, so that'll be our claim. Item number twelve is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of board trustees that was held on September thirteenth. Make motion. I'll second. Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item thirteen is the approval of the minutes of the September eighteenth special meeting of the board trustees. Make motion. I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Yep. Item fourteen is the approval of the minutes of the October third special meeting of board trustees. Make motion. I'll second. Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Item fifteen, new business. Does anyone have any new business for the good early order? Okay, I've got two. So I reported to you guys that our fire department was a recipient of a five thousand dollar grant. We're going to be using it on fire extinguisher training equipment that can be used for village employees, fire department employees and civic groups like Scouts and stuff like that. I'd like it, if you guys would authorize me to sign the agreement so that we can get our five thousand dollars. I'll make a motion. I'll second that. Any discussion on that? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, you may not remember this, but we had, we had an insurance award on the fencing that was destroyed at the tennis courts. Tree branches fell on it and ended up all on. And it's for our last fiscal year. So we had a hard time getting bids on the fencing, but we've got a bid now. We're in a new fiscal year. So to replace the fences, it's going to cost seven thousand eight hundred dollars. But the money that we got from the insurance is now in our general fund because we're in a new fiscal year. So we'd like to amend line A seventy-one forty forty-five fifty-two by seven thousand eight hundred dollars. That's the line that we'll pay for the replacement of fence out and take that money from the general fund to fund it. So entertain a motion for that amendment to the line seventy-one forty forty-five fifty-two. I'll make the motion. I'll second. Any discussion on that one? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Chris, will this work be done this year or be done next year?
Yep.
Will it be done this year?
Yep. So as a matter of fact, the vendor would like to start as soon as possible because it's getting into the cold times of the year for something. Right, anything else before you adjourn? Any motion to adjourn?
So bid.
So bid.